To ninth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Can we all rise and say the pledge of allegiance together?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Thank you. Jamie, will you call the roll?
Councilman Jeff Capel.
Here.
Councilwoman Jill Cole. Councilman Lisa Erwanka.
Here.
Councilman Brian Gath.
Here.
Vice Mayor Promod Javary.
Here.
Councilwoman Katie Schneider.
Here.
Mayor Mark Serken.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should we excuse Councilwoman Cole?
Oh, good idea. Motion to excuse Councilwoman Cole for tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie. Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two?
Ooh.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any communications from council, Jamie?
We do. Tonight, there's a request for a liquor license from Summit Pancakes LLC, doing business as Sugar and Spice. It's been reviewed by the police department, and there is no objection.
Yeah. Reports from outside agencies. None. Mayor's report will be entered into the public record. Do I have a motion to accept the financial report from May of two thousand twenty-two?
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. We're going to move to hearings from citizens. If you'd wish to speak, please approach the microphone, state your name and address. If you have any materials to pass out, please give them directly to the clerk of council. Please keep your comments as brief as possible to allow others a chance to be heard. Hearings for citizens is for us to listen to you and your neighbors. It's very unlikely we will make any remarks immediately after you speak. We need to have a chance to reflect on your comments, research the subject, consider city codes and legal issues. Sometimes during miscellaneous business, we do revisit an issue brought forward. The clerk of council will notify you when three minutes have passed, and at that time, please wrap up your presentation. Most importantly, let's all treat each other with dignity and respect. Mistress Myjunis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening. Rob Smijunas, nine oh four six, nine oh four Ridgeway Close in Amberly. I'm here to talk about eleven five hundred Reed Hartman Boulevard, Reed Hartman Highway. The former P and G site, approximately about fifty acres on the east side. They're close to the two seventy-five interchange. Over the number of five years since I think we purchased it, we've attempted to, with the help of the administration, attempted to lease the building once or twice to Kroger for the entire thing, for a, the whole thing, for a technical center for IT. Twice that kind of fell apart right at the very end in the C-suite. We talked, we had it under agreement with a very large German company for the whole building, and that fell apart in their C-suite in Germany. And one other group had it under agreement and didn't go forward. Recently, we were here with Skanel, looking at a rezone to allow us to have some sort of warehouse for about six hundred thousand square feet of flex buildings, number of buildings. And we were not successful in doing that. We're presently still marketing the property, although our brokers and other folks are saying, and we've received this numerous times, that we need to take down the building. We are working with a very large international company. It's probably, in the United States, it's probably a Fortune fifty or a Fortune forty. It's a pharma life science company, and they're move, they would be moving operations and increasing the size dramatically. And the total investment in this building, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, would probably be reaching well over a hundred and fifty million. So it's a pretty sizable investment. Before they do FF and A, it's a very, very technically high, high, high expense building. To do that, we need to take down the building or to do anything else. We're talking to people about solar companies and things like that. We would need to take down the building. The building, as you may or may not know, that particular building was built in eighty-six. When P and G built it, or yeah, about eighty-six, when P and G built it, it was scoped to have no asbestos in the fire retardant. That did not occur. There was asbestos in the fire retardant all over. And we are required prior to demolishing the building to take it all out because it's a health hazard. If it gets in the air, it will really cause a lot of problems. So we are, we've applied to the state of Ohio for the brownfields remediation program. There is a local match on that particular program. And in this case, we've gotten the cost down quite a bit because at one time it was, the first price was eleven or twelve million bucks to get the remediation, not even demolition, but remediation. We've been able to work hard with different remediation companies, and we've been able to get the remediation and demolition down to about six million dollars in total. The local match in this case for the, the whole demolition remediation in this case is about a million and a half. And I'm here just to hopefully thank you to be supportive in the local match, to get this building down so that we can make this land productive again. I know that you guys, people here and everywhere, have commented to me about the trees we took down numerous years ago. That was my call because I wanted to, because people couldn't see the building, and I've gotten some comments from the brokers because it is a magnificent building, and nobody could see it. And that was the reason why we took down the trees. Now we got a lot of grass growing in the front. I, we do mow around the building, but that grass gets a little unruly. We'll probably mow it with a, with a track kind of mower, probably in the next few weeks. We'll probably do it once or twice in a season because there's still a lot of roots and things of that nature. We did do a deal with the Sycamore School District. We did a temporary lease with the, for their bus depot. They're, they've been wonderful to work with. And then we, because of the fact that the school district was exhausted, had exhausted all their remedies to put a new bus depot, finding a piece of land, I guess, has been very, very difficult. We tried to see where we could place this so that we could maximize the land for business and other things. And luckily, the school district's engineers were able to successfully create an area that they could utilize for their entire bus system closer to the back of, by Grooms Road. So they'll be able to enjoy access, going through our, going through the rest of the property and getting on Reed Hartman, as well as what they even told us is it's been important to get back to Grooms Road because the high school and Sycamore High Schools back there, and other things, of course. So it's a little bit of background, but I hope you would consider the local match for this remediation fund. The state's going to be, the state would be coming in with approximately about four million bucks, four million dollars, four and a half million dollars. So that's it. And I, I heard there were questions and comments that people wanted to provide us. Is there?
Going to do any talking, it should be when we deal with the resolution, I would think. Better?
Yeah.
Are you able to stick around?
Yeah. Yeah.
We, we let Mistress Myjunis go longer than three minutes. There's a resolution on the docket tonight that is quite significant, so, and it's also has to be very timely. So I apologize, but everybody else, but thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Well, you'll get, you'll both get. I pull it down.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kalpana, and I'm here to invite you all for a walkathon that is organized by Safe Soil Movement.
No, go ahead. I was just.
Okay. Okay. Yes, I dropped off the material today. The Safe Soil Movement was launched to create awareness among the, the people about the soil degradation and, and create awareness in the people and to take it up to the government to implement a policy for revitalizing the soil. This is not just to create an alarm bell, but they are also suggesting methods, different methods, how we can rejuvenate the soil. They are advocating to put back three to six percent of organic content in the soil, in the cultivable land. So this can, you know, turn around what has been happening for the last forty, forty-five years. So we volunteers are organizing a walkathon on June sixteenth at Corbin Nixon Park in Mason. So we, I would like to invite you all, mayor, vice mayor, and the council members to be there, to hear the citizens, and to take it up to the next level. So I dropped off the material today. I don't want to take much of your time going over every bit of the detail. So, yeah, I'm here for you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said the June sixteen, but it's June eighteen.
It's, sorry, it's June eighteenth, Saturday at nine AM. We are inviting, you know, mayors and people from other, you know, higher levels, from corporate, from medical field, everybody to be there to represent us and so that the voice can be heard. Like to invite you all. I hope you can all come and support us.
Thank you.
My name's Lori Drazen, one oh two, three, six, Stable Hand Drive in Sims Township. I am the area director for Neighborhood Bridges Sycamore, also known as Sycamore Bridges. We're a local five oh one C three nonprofit that serves our neighbors in the Sycamore community. We launched our website in May two thousand nineteen with one simple mission, to connect our larger Sycamore community with our schools in providing basic needs, removing barriers, and seeking equity for students so they can engage and succeed in school and life. How do we work? We're essentially an online gateway to kindness, sort of like many GoFundMes, but with extensive research and vetting, very specific asks and minimal fees. Community advocates identify needs and bring them to me anonymously. We then post these needs to our website and social media, allowing donors to assist families at their discretion. We pride ourselves on efficiency, often filling needs in a matter of hours. And with just two percent in overhead expenses, nearly every penny donated is pushed right back into our community. We work very closely with Sycamore Community Schools and Operation Give Back, as well as the Montgomery and Blue Ash Police and Fire Departments to help identify our needs. In fact, Blue Ash Fire Chief Chris Thaders and Mr. Brian Gath have both served in our steering committee since two thousand nineteen. And Blue Ash Police Officer Beth Roach is one of our most active advocates for the community. Officer Roach even made a bridges delivery for me on Friday on her way out of town on vacation. So that's how dedicated our advocates are. So what types of needs do we fill? Our individual family needs range from tangible items like clothing, shoes, school supplies, furniture, appliances, to service-based needs like translators, drivers, medical, dental, and eye exams, to financial needs such as rent, utility bills, car payments, gas gift cards, sports registration fees, et cetera. In addition, as I mentioned, we work closely with Sycamore Community Schools and Operation Give Back to fund much larger district projects. In other words, there's quite a range in the type of assistance we offer, and no need is considered too big or too small for us. And as the economy continues to drift along an uncertain path, we anticipate greater needs in the future. We just celebrated our third anniversary three weeks ago, and I'm pleased to announce that we have filled two hundred and eighty-eight needs and bridged more than two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in goods and services to our Sycamore families in just three years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I encourage you, I have some handouts to check out our Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. Subscribe to our website so you can learn about needs as they arise. The more people who know about us, we fill both our donor side of our bridge and our recipient side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearings for, from citizens? Being none, we'll move on. I do have a question before we go to committee reports, probably for you, counselor. With Mr. Smijunas here, this isn't a public hearing. Is there any issues we should be aware of as far as asking him questions during debate over the resolution?
No, it's the pleasure, counsel.
That was easy. Okay, we'll go to committee reports. Finance and Administration, Lisa Erwanka, chairperson.
First off, I have a motion setting a public hearing at four seven oh five PM on Thursday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two for consideration of the two thousand twenty-three tax budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And passes. Next. Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight by Title Only.
Amending Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh four, supporting an application for Ohio Ground Field Remediation Program funding for the demolition of vacant buildings at eleven five hundred Reed Hartman Highway.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion.
Have a number of thoughts on it. Four years ago.
But, hold on.
Sure.
I'd like to first give it over to David and give us an update. So Dave, you want to give us an update?
Just, just to reset the stage for everyone, I think Rob mentioned it a little bit. The, this is the former Procter and Gamble Sharon Wood site. It had both an east and a west side. Fortunately, and what we have is a grant application in front of the state that appears to be on track for approval for four and a half million dollars. They're looking for a million and a half dollar local match. The west side, if you recall, was successfully redeveloped. Actually, Mr. Smijunas was the lead on that in recruiting ensemble. And so fortunately, that project in that side didn't have asbestos and didn't have problems, and they were able to successfully do that. Unfortunately, with COVID, the, the amount of the jobs haven't quite got to what they anticipated, but it's still about seven hundred and fifty jobs, five hundred thousand dollars in earnings tax and other hundred and some thousand a year in, actually, I think, a couple hundred thousand a year in TIF funds and what have you coming. So, so that side's been successfully developed. But the other side is your, as he intimated, has asbestos. He talked about a couple of projects. I know from the staff perspective, we've worked with him and our own prospects through Ready Cincinnati, trying to find it. Come close, they just get scared by asbestos in the cleanup and the markets change and so on and so forth. And when you consider other projects in the region that have had these kind of problems, I even go back to the GM plant in Norwood, took twenty or thirty years to get cleaned up before it became something. The carousel site and on Reading Road. Katie mentioned to me a day or two ago about a trihealth site. I forget where it was, something Oaks, that has some asbestos that they vacated. And so it's a challenge. And so for you as council, you have this opportunity to potentially cause this property to be cleaned up, redeveloped, and go from there. I know one or, one or two questions have been about, you know, what's, what's the role? Should we pay the local match or not? And I would say, you know, you've had this project for four or five years. There's been carrying costs. There's been about a hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax paid on it without cash flow. So the developer certainly has some skin. He's had some loss opportunity into this. Hopefully, you can, as I joked to him the other day, I said, well, we'll just keep score. As council has the ability in the future to dictate the approval of the project and the future structure of a project. But I think the big picture shouldn't be missed, and that is you have an opportunity to clean up the site, control your, your destiny a little bit, and it's not common for you to be able to do that in such a quick timeframe. The Port Authority has spent years trying to buy contaminated sites and get them cleaned up, and they're, you know, it's taken them a long time. Rob did, did mention about the school board. I will say Kelly can vouch for this, that they've worked with Kelly for a couple of years trying to get bus depot location, and Rob was fortunate to get it. So I guess if you want to give him some kudos for helping out the local community such as the school board, you're welcome to do that. But, but all that being aside, I know it's, it's not uncommon to kind of regard developers as bad guys and, and we're going to wrestle them for everything they have and what have you. But, you know, this, this really is about whether you want to, you know, ensure that that project gets turned over. I don't, I don't think there's too many communities that would love, that, that wouldn't mind, in fact, would love being in this position to have a four and a half million dollar grant and leveraging with a million and a half dollars. And other than that, I don't know what else to, what else you were hoping I would add. So I hope that clarified it.
Thank you.
I'm not wrestling him. Have you seen the man? I'm not going to wrestle him. Do you see the man?
With that.
Mr. Erwanka, I have a couple of questions for the.
I'm going to open it up for discussion. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for the city manager. That's right, Jeff?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm new to all this. So, so the, I, I recognize that I just may be ignorant on a lot of things. This Brownfield Grant Program, this is not an ongoing thing. This is something special that's happened once in a blue moon?
Yeah, there was an old tax credit program that dissipated a few years ago. Now, that was the program Rob was trying to get a few years ago. That program went by the wayside, and Kelly probably can provide some detail. But this is a, this is a brand new program. It's a first round, and it will be funded until it runs out. We think the end of this year, maybe next year. So it was a one-time shot. Kelly, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, I can just say the statewide, it's a three hundred and fifty million dollar program, and when those funds are gone, it's gone.
So two things I'm hearing there. One, if we waited to next year, there's absolutely no expectation that that, the opportunity would present itself again. And the second thing that I think I understand, if we delayed this a month, does that dramatically affect the chances of our getting a grant?
I don't know if I have a strong opinion. I don't know if it'll dramatically end it, but the state has asked us to give them some confirmation of this. Do you have anything else on that?
So, so projects are funded on a first-come, first-served basis. So Rob was able to get his application in at the very beginning and the first round of funding. And so each time the state asks us for information, they give him a ten-day deadline, and we had to push to get that extended to even have the meeting tonight. So I wouldn't want to wait on it. There's a lot of other projects behind his that are being considered, so.
Potentially lose your place in line kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I don't know how development works. An engineer, a recovering engineer with all, with infinite money would say, oh, well, the first thing I'm going to do is tear down the building. But if I'm putting a financial hat on, I may not want to tear down a building and incur those costs until I have somebody coming in, you know, that I know is going to want something. How would getting this grant affect a timeline that somebody could move in if they, if we had it, somebody who wanted that property?
Yeah, so as, as it, it has appeared in retrospect over the last four years, and so you can assume probably moving forward, getting the site green and prepared eliminates a lot of barriers. Right now, you have people interested in the site, but how long will it take for this to happen? Are you sure you're going to have clean certification when it's done? Their attorneys, their environmental attorneys get involved, scare them off, and they just take a green site in Mason. And so to answer your question theoretically, once this project is done, meaning the, the removal of the asbestos or the demolition of everything, now you're back to a more even playing field versus a green site in Westchester or Mason or Indiana, so.
Thank you. And then my last question, if, if, if the grant is, if the match is approved and the grant is given, what's the timeline to get from where we are today to a green field?
I think, Kelly, hold me. I, I think we're hoping sixty to ninety days that it's out the bid and this and that, and it's probably sixty, ninety days before it's done. And so you're talking maybe potentially by the end of the year. Do you know, based on that grant? Well, your problem is we can't ask. I'm not going to invite the developer to the table to answer that because this is not a zoning hearing or this is your deliberation. So if you want to ask that question, you can do that, so.
Six to nine months, it would happen. It would, it would begin at, once approval happened, it wouldn't wait any further.
No, the, the, one of the criteria the state is looking for are projects ready. So they don't want something that's going to happen a while. So when you make the commitment, they're looking for it right away. So I believe it'll be based on another project that we've been tracking. That project, thirty, sixty days from the award, they're, they're starting to work. So I believe you're looking at sixty days from now, we will be starting to work, assuming the state gave us approval tomorrow.
But there wouldn't be a year's wait before you started the process just because it's Tuesday. It would move as quickly as possible.
Yeah, like I said, if this gets awarded, if this gets awarded, I think you're, you're looking at demolition within, starting within ninety days.
Thank you.
Okay, do I, can I go now? All right. So my thoughts are, four years ago, developers purchased the property knowing it would require several million dollars of asbestos remediation costs. We have helped them secure a state grant for three quarters of those costs. I have a hard time believing that they can't afford one-fourth of the costs they knew were coming, especially when that one-fourth match results in a free check for the rest. I've been around the block enough times to see numerous examples of applicants who claim they can't afford something when they're in the hunt for government money, and then they miraculously find the cash shortly after being rejected for those tax funds. In January, we passed a resolution to endorse a state grant that would pay three quarters of this cost. We specifically did not pledge to provide the one-fourth match. The title of this resolution is innocently labeled as a mere amendment to the previous resolution that committed no money. In reality, this legislation as written is providing a one point five two five million dollar gift to the owner of this privately owned property with no repayment requirement. This legislation relies on a hope and a prayer that we might be repaid at some unspecified later time. Stating that we might be able to recoup the money in the future does not constitute a legally binding obligation. We are not a charity for the well-connected. If we're going to front the money, there has to be an enforceable obligation to repay us. The one option of that that has been mentioned in our documents is to be repaid from a future TIF. The usual purpose of a TIF is to keep the new property taxes within the area to be used for the infrastructure improvements that the project requires. So even if it is fully legal to have the loan repaid from future theoretical TIF dollars, and the TIF would be large enough to produce this kind of money, the consequence is that the TIF money used to repay this one point five billion dollars is money that can't be used for the kind of future infrastructure improvements that TIFs exist to fund. We would be irresponsible to hand over this money without a legally binding repayment requirement. Such a deal also must protect us from a possible developer bankruptcy and any possible ramifications if the LLC loophole is used to sell the property in the future. Regarding the first one, people and companies have used bankruptcy as a method to get out of their obligations, which is why an unsecured repayment plan is insufficient. As for the LLC loophole, that involves when property is sold. Normally, if you sell property, it's just the, you know, the person under your own name. You sell your house to somebody who then buys the property under their own name. Well, what many of the top point one percent and some others are doing now is they're putting the property into an LLC. And then instead of selling the property, they sell the LLC. And what that does in the immediate term is that avoids the, the, the property transfer tax. But what also would have to be accounted for, and since I'm not a property attorney, I, I don't have the answer on it, is. I don't have the answer on it, is what if, for example, a lien that could normally be enforced against a property when it's sold could not be enforced if the property was put into the LLC and then the LLC was sold, meaning the property never was sold? Those are the kind of things I would want to make sure that any such contract would account for. We should not be releasing these funds without a binding repayment requirement and with bankruptcy and possible LLC loophole issues accounted for in that contract. The $6.1 million of work here would represent an improvement to the property that is enjoyed by the property owner. So if we're going to contribute 1.525 million to that, we should have a commensurate security claim that protects our investments along with a provision that allows us to force a sale of the property if we are not repaid by a certain date. Bankruptcies and LLC loopholes happen, but a piece of property itself can't go run off anywhere. And if we have some form of interest in it, we can ensure we get repaid. So as you can see from my comments, my answer is not a no. I don't think we're stuck in a binary world where we either have to pass this irresponsible resolution as it's written or just say no to everything and the heck with it. It's just if we're going to front the 1.52 million dollars, we need to make sure the contract is written properly to protect our interest in that investment. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You go first. I look at this situation and I have seen this situation before. City already have spent $4.5 million to purchase a small two and a half acre land. So we already spent that, which is somewhere around nine percent of our, if there is, if we have a 50% rainy fund, 50, $50 million rainy fund. So that becomes a nine percent which is gone. Now we're talking about 1.5. So there is another 3% if it's that. So what I'm saying is that, do we need to go and because of 2008 to 2022, we have a growing economy over the whole United States. And still we were unable to find a commercial building in our summit park, which was promised to us for certain reason. At that time, they were telling us that there is a Balkan, Balkan is going to buy, Balkan is going to buy. They will keep on pushing to every one of them. Balkan never buy and we don't have the commercial building either. What I'm seeing is that when we don't, we have a high economy and we could not provide. The time is coming, not that gravy right now as I see it. So I want to see, I want to see, make sure that I protect my investment, my Blue Ash city's money and how we can protect our money before we give it away. So the things is that when the things came into, is this, really, we really need to think about this, that if we give this one, this much money, when we're going to get return? 10, 15? Because of the economy is not greatest. And we have seen the cycle. 10 or 15 years it goes down. In 2008, 2009, the things which going on right now, the price of the food, price of transportation, price of the, price of guests and all, everything and everywhere we've been talking about. So do you think, we really need to think before we give this 1.5 million dollars, which we'll not get returned within next to 10 to 15 years minimum, according to me? That's what I want, I'm really bothered that how we can justify, and justifying is the only way, that if somebody can give us some kind of promise, we are ready to pursue on this 2022, 2028 resolution. I want everybody to think about this situation is coming to us in next 10 years, what's going to happen? Nobody knows, but this could happen. And when things happens, people get out of money, people don't have the money and they get out of the positions, only way they can get out is the bankruptcy. And I don't want to talk more. My colleague already talked about what's going to happen. So my request to all of us, that really please think about this before we give away this money. That's all I can say.
I'll be brief. To me, to risk losing 4.57 million dollars, it's, the grant is inconceivable to me. It likely will never be available again, or it's very likely. We're going to put some investment in this property, if not today, in the future, regardless if we turn our backs on this opportunity. TIF funds are almost always used in these types of developments without any city ownership. I think it's a great investment in our community. We seem to be in a good place politically with matching funds for various projects. And I really attribute that to the city administration. Our projects seem to do well. And we have the backup of police and fire to keep it safe. And rejecting an environmentally, economically and resident-friendly remediation product, I think would be really poor stewardship on our part.
I think, Jeff, you bring up a lot of good points. And I think this is not a decision that we should take lightly. It's a lot of money that we would be investing into this. But I think as I kind of zoom out beyond just looking at, you know, the benefit to the developer, looking at the bigger picture and what the city of Blue Ash wants, what we want for that property, it's been sitting there for a while. And, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, about the 4.5, 0.7 million dollar grant, that's a pretty significant chunk of the $350 million that they're investing into the state. And so they think this is a really valuable piece of property and community to invest in. Brownfield remediation has been one of the most successful sustainability initiatives because it brings all this economic life back into these properties that may sit there, like you mentioned, David, for decades. And I don't want to see that happen to a property in our city that, you know, is prime location, it's valuable, it's, it's, could be something really great. And I think passing up this opportunity, you know, we've already kind of turned down a couple of opportunities with this because we wanted better. And I think, I think if we can kind of look beyond that, at the bigger picture and what will this benefit the city in the long run? I think it, it's too hard to pass up that, I think that we should do that. But keeping in mind as well, it's not a decision taken lightly. It's a lot of money. You know, there is a risk to this investment in providing that to the developer. I think it's in our best interest.
Welcome. Go ahead. When I, when I was elected, I met with the city manager and he, he promised me that at least twice a year, something that we voted on would be tough to answer. And I, I think I found at least the first one here. And as I was looking at it, I, I went back to the strategic goals and objectives that we as a council re-approved as part of our, our work project, product meeting in, in January. And under strong and vibrant economic development, we state two things. One, we recognize the importance of the Blue Ash corporate community in support of community amenities. And two, we say that we will stimulate economic growth through redevelopment, revitalization and/or preservation of existing commercial properties. So last year, when, when the developer came to council and I, I went back and looked at your debate, I wasn't on council at that time. And I, and you all pointed out that this was a major gateway to our community and that we, what was desired there was a really high quality development. According to the minutes, Councilman Capel stated that the things that were being proposed, such as apartments, car washes and restaurants, were not what he wanted to see in Blue Ash and that this was such a prime area, the council and city should be looking for major companies or larger divisions of major companies and not drive-through restaurants, car washes and apartments. Vice Mayor, you've already added that having a car wash and drive-through restaurant in this key location at the entrance to Blue Ash from 275 doesn't represent what Blue Ash is or what it wants for the future. And for these reasons and similar, it, the motion went down seven to nothing, right? And, and I agree with that. This ought to be a high-quality development. So what about the goals and objectives? Well, we state that we recognize that the importance of the Blue Ash corporate community is, is great in support of community amenities. Well, this land used to contribute $3 million a year to all those amenities. And for the last several years, we've gotten almost nothing out of it. Returning this property to a position where it will continue, where it will contribute even one or $2 million a year would make a significant positive impact on the city. We also say that we will stimulate redevelopment. And I, and this is where the tough question is, is what does stimulate mean? Because what's the best way to do that? The, the administration and council doesn't have any formulas for how we will incentivize companies or, or invest in developments. And that's because we recognize that every project's different. And, and so you have to treat each company and each property with their own facts. I, I don't like the proposal in front of us. I would rather the developer come with the, you know, with the local match. I would have, I would have loved that. I would have happily supported a, you know, some split. I, I think if somebody wants to give us a, you know, even if we have to finance it, that sounds like a better deal for me. And I was disappointed when I read in the city manager's memo from July, June 2nd, that the developer has indicated that he's unable to provide match funds as he's already invested in the property and expects future expenses. What? You know, I, when I, when you buy it, you, you recognize that it was there. I, I think Mr. Capel's comment, how, how can you not know that this is a problem? It, it, it resounds and resonates in my mind. In normal circumstances, there would be no grant to cover the three quarters of the, of the demolition and remediation costs, let alone a contribution from the city. So I, so I don't like it. And though I've been told that the city might recoup this money when the property's eventually developed, I prefer to see the developer making a contribution on the front end. Unfortunately, due to the time constraints of this grant, it seems like we don't have time to extend negotiations. If there's even anything that we can get out of negotiations, it could be that the developer is not in a position to, to make a better deal for the city. So what do we do? For me, it comes down to money. The sooner that we can bring this property into a productive status with a high-quality development that we're looking for, the sooner we'll begin to receive that $1 to $3 million a year in income taxes that we expect it can generate. And that would make this investment, making this investment will speed this process and will provide a strong payback to the city. I don't like it and I'll pinch my nose and support it, not because I want to help a developer or even because I think it's a fair proposal, but because I think this is the best option for our city.
Want to pose any questions to the developer or not? My simple comments, one word, jobs. This is about jobs. And from a historical point, over time, the city has invested millions in that interchange up there with 275 and Reed Hartman. Primarily that was because of PNG being there. We loved them as our, a great contributor to the city as our earnings tax. The earnings tax pays our bills. That's how we pay our bills for all our nice amenities here. That property is, was the number one producer of earnings tax for us. I want to see this put back into production. Yeah, the timing's off. Timing's never going to be perfect. You know, there's the potential of a, a company that's interested in being there, could be 700 jobs. We can put a TIF in place to make this work, to get the money back. That's fine. You know, it's just procedure and timing. Yeah, it all is crap, but this is an opportunity that's been presented to us. I firmly believe we should take it. So, and again, it's about jobs. We knew that, we wanted, we've already turned down a couple of other opportunities on this property. This could be the way to do that. Nobody's going to be interested in this property the way it is right now. Doesn't matter if it's this developer or any other developer. It's the same process that you're going to go through. And with the opportunity with the state, the way it is, with the money that they're offering here, I say take it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Can I, can I say a few things? When you're talking about jobs, job is still coming. I just got today one email, the Quest Defense, they're taking 25,000 square feet here and bringing their headquarters here. So bringing jobs in Blue Ash is not a big problem because everybody loves to come to Blue Ash because we give them the incentive for so many different ways. So they love to come over here. So it's not a job. Jobs was supposed to be at the, our summit park. We don't see it. Was supposed to be 500,000 to 1 million, 1 million square feet was supposed to be office buildings. We haven't seen it. The way the economy is going, it's going to take a while. We may have to go, as we talked about, the manufacturing plants or something else. That's not going to create some big money for us. We always have promoted IT people and some other different companies who has a high payroll. That was our motive all the way, all the time. We are defending, are we going away from there? And I think job is not a question here. We created more job than we lost. We lost 1,600 jobs, but we created more than 3,600 jobs, if I correct the numbers and everything. So I don't think that's jobs here. The, here is the things that we talked about. So nothing is wrong with the developers. I'm just talking, we are trying to protect the money for ourselves here. When we're going to get returned, 10 to 15 years from today? That's what I'm figuring out myself. So I really need to think about this before we give over the money. We can use that money for somewhere else. Lot of companies coming, we can give them the more incentive. Our goal is to give 1.5 ratio of payroll. We give for one, one and a half years, two years return. We can give them more in two years, two years or three years, we can give them more. But then that will be here. We will have jobs right there and there. We can convince the people to come over here using this 1.5 million dollars. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the one thing though, is the difference between Summit Park and this project, this project is a brownfield. It's classified as a brownfield. Summit Park is not. So Summit Park is pristine. This, this conversation's all about a grant money for brownfield remediation. This is our opportunity to fix that property, to make it productive. It's just as simple as that.
Can I say a few more? Okay. What things is that we are not responsible for this, 1.5 million dollars. When somebody's buying the project, somebody's buying the land, easily they are, they're selling the east side very easily. West side, it's a lot of problem because of the 2019, 20, 21 came and all kinds of stuff there. But to do this kind of where we not going to see our return and it's going to be a long time before they can bring some companies here. I hope they come right away tomorrow or day after tomorrow. It's all possibilities there. But right now, as I see it, what I'm saying is, is this money is going out and doesn't have any return. I understand in the future, yes, we will have. In the future, they might sell and they might get it. It's the same thing here. So that's where I'm coming from. I, I'm just disagreeing on this kind of stuff. Sorry to.
Okay.
Sorry for concern.
It's all good.
Okay. That's, that's really, people really need to think about this before we vote and do anything or give us more chance to think about. This is a 10 days, right away, emergency.
You're not, you're not going to get the chance after this.
I understand, but, but I'm saying to the administration and him, I know it's a right way. We need to make a decision today. But this is where I'm feeling and this is what I, my thoughts are.
Mayor, any other discussion?
Yeah, so things I had is, look, let's make sure we're keeping in mind that we are not on the hook for a $4.6 million grant. The owner of this privately owned property is the one who receives the $4.6 million grant and then is able to make that much improvement to their property, which they undoubtedly were able to purchase at a reduced price because of all the asbestos.
undoubtedly were able to purchase at a reduced price because of all the asbestos that was there that we all knew about. A second, I would hope that if council members are presented with a piece of legislation and there's obvious ways to improve it, that we would take the opportunity to want to improve it instead of just sit here thinking that we're obligated to rubber stamp every damn thing that comes before us. We are essentially becoming an equity partner to the tune of 1.25 million dollars, except we're receiving 0% equity in it and no security interest in it, not even an unsecured contract to get that 1.5 million dollar, 1.525 million dollars back. We're simply sending the check. What we are receiving out of this is a canceled check for over 1.5 million dollars. Now, as for the timing of this, for one thing, I haven't heard when the actual supposed deadline is. And I'd also be curious to know, like, when is the deadline that we would have to pay the 1.525 million? And I mean the real deadline. I don't mean like a birding deadline where somebody just creates an artificial deadline and sends something to you two days before and says, you must pass it now or else. I feel like it's deja vu. I was just at the county commissioner meeting last Thursday where this exact same thing came up. On Monday night of Memorial Day, the county commissioners received a packet from the corrupt organization known as FIFA. They were told.
This has nothing to do with.
They were told that they had to sign, that they must pass by the Thursday meeting a 257-page contract that they cannot alter. And so then the question is, do you, do you then just say, yes, sir, as if you work for them? Or do you say, that's your deadline, it's not mine?
We're going to have to cut off.
We're in exactly the same situation.
You're now focusing on something else unrelated to this.
We are now in the same situation here. We receive a, a piece of legislation Tuesday night on an issue we've known about for months. And we're told, you guys are saying we have to pass it tonight or else, or else we lose the 4.6 million.
You can vote no on this if you choose to. You can vote no on it.
May I make my points?
Sure.
Because I don't, I don't disrupt you guys when you have the floor. And then lastly, with, with respect to the argument that this creates jobs, normally we're very efficient in how we spend money to create jobs. We, the, the total package for the huge company across the street ensemble, they're going to create about 2,300 jobs, cost us a few million dollars of incentives to do that. So if we were going to actually, if we wanted to create jobs, 1.525 million dollars can create several hundred good jobs or more, way more jobs than simply becoming a non-owner equity partner in tearing down a building. Because you know, then if this goes down and at some point they're going to come back to us with a, with then a proposal, we're going to be asked to, to do the same thing, make, make those forgivable loans, the, make some incentives to create those jobs. This is not how you, this is not how you would spend 1.5 million dollars to create jobs if creating jobs was the goal here.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Jamie, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Javary.
No.
Councilwoman Capel.
No.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gaff.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Four yeses, two nos.
Thank you. Jamie, please read Resolution Number 2022-29 by title only.
Providing for the reappointment of Denise Steeman to the Civil Service Commission, the reappointment of Carlton T. Brown to the Charter Revision Committee, and the reappointment of Arnold Stoller to the Board of Tax Review.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-29.
Second.
Any discussion? They're all very good people, so. Any other points?
We need more of them. More folks coming forward to, to fill these volunteer spots. It's critical for our, our community and I'm grateful for their service.
I'll put a plug in there just for the record. Anybody, any of our residents, I should say, who are interested in our boards or commissions, please send in your resumes and we'll look at them over time when positions become available.
Instructions on the website or see any of us and we'll point you to them.
Absolutely. Any other points? Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilwoman Capel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gaff.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Six yeses.
All I have, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to move to Parks and Recreation Committee Chair Katie Schneider.
Thank you. Jamie, could you please read Resolution Number 2022-30 by title only?
Providing for the appointment of Wendy Cirkin and naming Thomas C. Stone as Chairman Emeritus of the Recreation Board of the City of Blue Ash, Ohio.
Move to adopt Resolution 2022-30.
I want to say, what a, I'm sorry, I, I always talk, but I'm going to talk about Tom Stone. Tom Stone was one of the first people that I met when I came to Blue Ash. He's a member of the congregation where I serve and he has done such wonderful things for his neighbors and for this community. I think that this honor is making him the Chairman Emeritus of the Rec Board, that he really has been the, the lifeblood of.
He is the original member.
Yeah. Is, is so appropriate. And Wendy or anyone who would seek to fill his shoes as, as in service has a great example to follow.
Tom Stone has served since 1978. Very long time.
Before all of us.
I was alive, barely.
With the city, with the city.
No other discussion? Jamie, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Gaff.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Well, I, Wendy, I want to have you come up here and swear you in.
How's this work?
She's new. Mayor doesn't usually get a kiss after that, does he?
Of course not. There's all kinds of possible.
You can keep on.
Although that was a little awkward, she has been more dedicated than a lot of us in a lot of ways with Rec Board. And I, I appreciate you guys not worrying about the fact that, you know, there is a relationship that Steph Stoller's husband, Arnie, served for years and years on Board of Tax Review. It, it's, there's certainly complications with that, so thank you all. All right, we're going to move to planning and zoning. Vice Mayor Javary, chairperson.
Jamie, would you please read Resolution Number 2022-31 by title only, please?
Providing for the reappointment of William Michael Duncan as a member of the Planning Commission and the reappointment of Joseph Holker to the Board of Site Arrangement and Board of Zoning Appeals for the City of Blue Ash.
Move to add up the resolution 2022-31.
Second.
Any question? Please, Jamie, call the roll.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Gaff.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Okay, we're going to move to the Public Works Committee, Councilman Gaff.
Jamie, will you please read Resolution 2022-32 by title only?
Accepting rights of way for public maintenance in the retreat at Summit Park subdivision.
This, and I move to adopt Resolution 2022-32.
Second.
This is a, a really a great day. This is a development that has reached kind of its penultimate point and it's, we've come to the point where the city has signed off, our department has signed off on taking over the improvements to the public right away. And so that is what we are about tonight for this motion and the next. Are there any questions?
Basically, this is exclamation mark of completing that neighborhood.
Yeah, this is the last phase too, right?
Means they get sold on the streets in the winter, et cetera, et cetera. Means it now belongs to us.
Good. All those in favor, say aye.
This is a roll call.
Oh, okay. Jamie, we read. I would, I thought I could just make it up. No, that's why we have you. Jamie, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Gaff.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you, Jamie. Jamie, will you read Resolution 2022-33 by title only?
Accepting rights of way for public maintenance in Cooper Springs Lane.
I move the adoption of Resolution 2022-33.
Okay.
There any discussion? Jamie, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Gaff.
Yes.
Councilman Capel.
Yes.
Mayor Cirkin.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Okay, we're going to move to miscellaneous business. We're going to have an update on the town square renovation project.
Great, thank you. Before I begin, Dave, would you like to make any comments? Do you have anything to say first? We're right into it.
Yeah, just to set the stage, Mr. Gaff, but everyone, remember a good year ago, we said we wanted to renovate Town Square. We hired BHTP and Human Nature to go through that process. We've gone through various meetings where we've advanced it. Essentially, the last meeting we had with this board, I think, was last fall, where the board approved in concept, you know, this, this layout, how we're going to do, where the parking lot's going to be. So they've taken that same exact concept and now they've just articulated details and a lot of design to it, getting it ready to go to bid. And so he will just show that tonight to you. There are, when he's done, we'll, we'll talk about two other issues, timing and, and, and another option. But that's really all tonight is, is just to let you know, it's now getting ready to go to bid, but we wanted to share that with you and let you hopefully appreciate the work that they've done. I believe you said you're 90% done with design work, so.
Great, thank you for having me back. I appreciate that. Last time we did come back, it was in October of 2021, so everybody seemed to be excited about some of the renderings and animations. So we've made advancements on that as we've completed and worked more towards the end of design. That means we get into constructability, we fine tune the details, understanding everything underground, vegetation, more detail and layers of information. So you'll hopefully see some of that here tonight, similar images from before, but just a little bit more enhanced. So we'll go through some of these renderings now and then we'll roll into an animation and fly you through the park again, just to give you a good overall picture of this. So same as last time, here's where the program elements still lie, giving you an overall where the memorial is out towards Cooper Road, anchoring itself around the corner of Hunt and Cooper, large lawn space in the, in the mental, and the promenade along the retail base here with accesses from all those retail bases. The play area and the play pockets, which is the same as before, we're expanding those out so they're spread throughout the park. So you don't have this one large area. You have these little play pockets that one engages much more of the park as well as the patrons in the retail. So it spreads that out a little bit, so you have less of a focused play area. Then we have the stage, which is a similar location to this now, but now it opens itself up to the park. So it, now it's more open instead of creating a wall that blocks you from the rest of the park we're seeing in. It is now is open to the rest of the area, both back toward the parking and open toward the civic green, so you can take advantage of the entire length of that. And then the dog park down here as well to help for the patrons of the, you know, the 400-plus units that are over there across the street in the multifamily. So same layout as before. Your existing key considerations, we went through this before, key considerations about the park and things that we were taking to thought about why and how we were designing it. And then as we'd gone into our vision statement, a couple of the key words we've been using as we go through the detail, we go through, you know, is this the value? Is this really what we should be doing and making choices? We use five, five key words, which is hub for the central of the community, sustainable, which means we want to maintain, make sure it maintains for years to come. A park is something that lasts for such a long time. We want it to be vibrant and exciting because right now, there's a lot of pavers, a lot of hardscape, and we don't draw patrons to this park on not only event bases, but also on a daily, through their routine each day and week. Intimate space, because we don't want it to just be one large space. We want to have pockets for people to be very excited about, to come to and to really get into the park and have their own little private area where they can have things with their families and their friends and their loved ones, as well as the experience while you're there, to remember it when you leave, to draw you back. This is an updated site plan, as we've kind of seen before. They took into consideration last time, we talked about sidewalks along Cooper Road to maintain that big thoroughfare. People can still run and go through that park. Other considerations we were listening to were about the parking. So parking shown down here in the lower area, being so close to retail, which will show you views is how we've distanced that and added activity, so you're not just retail based up right up next to the park. So to enhance everyone's experience of the park from a, from a business perspective. And we're going to show some advancements of right here where we've done to the play and a little more definition to what we did before. So you can see here, some of the pavers, we've talked about before, right now, your memorial has these pavers with names of people and donors that have cherished those things and we want to recreate those. So those will be reused in their existing condition, removed, stored, and then relayed on this corner, which kind of is our ending point for the memorial walk from all the statues that are going to come along them. So right here on the, each of these circles is where you have those statues with an individual moment for every war was, we'll get into that with the storytelling along the way, which we've talked about with Allegiant Club and everything else. As we move south, you can see here, we have the restroom building and as well as storage and the green room for anybody, the support space, making sure that we don't create a back of house, a back of building. We have that experience now. We want to make sure every front is something that you want to pass by, doesn't seem back of house. So that's where we've anchored our building the way we have. So your entrance is off from here as well as into the dog park. And then the stage is right here with lighter elements like trellises and sunscreens that give you a different area. So it's not just one giant overhang. It's kind of broken down so you can use it as needed because we want to make sure that this area, the stage area, is not similar to what you have now. We want to make sure that's used on a daily basis. Stage now is just the stage used a few times a year. We want to make sure people are using all that square footage to maximize the value. Overall of there, you can see here at Hunt and Cooper, that entrance off there where the pavers will be as you enter into the park with a nice view of that green space. Also, still opens you up, it doesn't block any of the retail here, and the only portion of the building that's actually solid will be right here. Here's now where we started to enter into the park. So we're coming off of Cooper Road, coming down, you'll see here on the left, this is where the memorial walk is. So the honor walk that we walked through here and had that storytelling. You can see where we've actually added this promenade that stretches down, a little block by the one tree, probably need to prune that one. Going down the promenade for the retail base, that's where you start to extend down and get your way into the park as well. Now we're in the memorial walkway, giving an opportunity for not only observing, we're not in the pathway, we're not devaluing the statues. You actually have a moment to break off, a story, talk to a child, explain what was happening at that time, especially from a remembrance standpoint. Hunt and Cooper, as you walk in, this is where those pavers will be, pulling the flags back in as well. So you have a nice grand moment and entry because we've been thinking about, as you just had recently, your Memorial Day celebration where you can have that remembrance. It's not just a storyline with the rest of everything. You would kind of want to have still that moment where you, the, you know, the color guard can come in, the bands can play and those type of things coming in from this As you're on that area with the pavers, you can now look over the park. You can see how it was very much is open all the way to the retail, all the way through the back. Here's another view as you're next to, there's the restroom building right there. You're at the other corner looking under, so this is the trellis. Um, we've created some kind of decorative things, the fun things about trellises is you can use the sunlight and the shading to change your park throughout the day. So they create a nice pattern on the ground to give that kind of breakup of the solid surface area. You don't want to just create that dark roof everywhere. A little bit of an aerial there, just looking down on this lawn, which is intended to hold those concerts. So we have, we have adjusted the slope of the lawn to maximize the slope while not inhibiting any play or activity during the days. And then at night, that turns into the concert. So that's where you have your nice views, looking into the park where you can either raise elevation for a stage if you wanted to, uh, depending on the concert or the event that's happening. But you can see how the park darkens. There's still lights, a lot of activity there. Entrance here is from the dog parks. We're on Hunt Road entering in, dog park on this corner. As you enter and it feeds you right into the green spaces, you travel straight down that path. And the parking area in the back, just giving you a full visibility right through the stage as it's completely open during non-event times. Some of the areas we've been, we've been playing with as well is you have this larger, we're using a lot of traditional materials, brick, um, some wood tones, non-maintain, you know, you don't have to maintain it. This is a sealed layer of wood on a glazed panel. So it's sealed. You don't have to stain it and refinish it and that sort of thing. It'll look the same way in fifteen, twenty years as it does today. Um, but we've also introduced some other playful elements and things you can find, which is about this, there's a screen element where we've taken that park feature and that park idea and grown that into nature on the building, as well as it is a canopy of a screen that plays with the light and the trellis onto the ground as it sunlight projects. Through this area here, we're intending this activity on the stage to be on a daily basis. The people are out there, they're eating out, they're hanging out there. They're bringing their lunches, they're reading, they're playing with their dogs. Then as you switch to the concert going, you can see how that terrain starts to rise up the back of the hill. Um, while the lights drop down and it fully operates as a stage, we're also looking, uh, been designing in this panel system because in the back of the stage, you need a panel system, you need something behind you in the concert. So this folds out, it's always in place and it folds out into a uh full background. That background for the stage. Entrance here at the end of uh Town Square Road, which is Mio's right around here. As you enter into the end of that road and that retaining wall that we've extended, still giving you a nice entrance points to the park. While buffering, you've got another fifteen foot of extension here. You got your steps down with a vegetation, large wide walkway and another vegetation bed to still give you the parking access you need, but while you don't feel like you're sitting next to the edge of the park. This is a fun area that's going to be programmed heavily, I believe. Uh, this is central to the park, but allows you to set up an event in this area. Well, providing plenty of space, but not a just big dead space while it's not used day to day. But this is where you can have your wine events, you can have a festival, you can have, you know, uh, any kind of arts event. This would be where they would probably set up. And then it goes on to at night. So, sorry. Um, a few of the things that we talked about also in this play area is that features that are normally seen as could be sitting, it could be playing. It's meant to be engaging to the children and their creativity, not necessarily just a swing that looks like a swing or a rock that are stepping stone. It's something that's kind of playful that they can run on and jump on and tended to be used that way as their creativity kind of builds up. Wondering, it's very exciting. So along that promenade, we talked about play being in these pockets along this whole, basically a, you know, a half of the park. The length there that we've talked about having, this is where those bubbling rocks come. So if you've been to, where you have, most of you have been to, Washington Park, the rock, the water that falls over the top, not necessarily just jets that are popping up and making something high, but more just a bubbling brook that runs over and you can push a button and the steam comes out, you know, it's just a kind of an activity for the children to kind of create that kind of fun environment where they can engage a little bit as well. And then it rolls into, you're familiar with uh L S I who helped with Summit Park. Uh, they came in to help to design some of this equipment along with our team with Human Nature, which I did forget to introduce Ryan Grismer from Human Nature is here tonight. So if you have any specific questions, he can also help answer those. That play equipment then extends with hopping stones and other elements to kind of continue this whole line, spreading that play out from one retail base end to the other, giving you that ability. Uh, one thing I didn't note is also right there in front of me is we did add swings as well. So similar to Summit Park. So it really does take that play from one end to the other. That play here. So this is intended for ages zero to twelve. So covering a lot of parents, I know I will be one of those that uh has sleepy bee sitting out there. That would be nice. And letting, being able to seal, see and observe the children out there. So that's a, that's a visual. It's one thing we'd like to do is we'd like to switch over the animation and the fly through to give you a real perspective. We stare at this stuff every day, so I think the animation's helpful to help explain. Similar as we started before, we start coming down Cooper Road and we'll go slowly into the entrance of the park and into the memorial walk there. This has all been updated with the selections and types of vegetation that you would see. So where you see high, you see low, you see trees. That's the intention is to get that same kind of feel uh when it's completed. So taking those moments, you can see the pockets that pop off and give you kind of ways that even if you are remembering, you're stepping in, you won't have the skateboarder interrupting you. You can be off to the side, but still being able to have that remembrance. Hop up and fly around Hunt Road. See here, that's the wood paneling on the, on the building there. We're using warm tones because there's a lot of warm brown brick in the area, masonry. Um, so we use some of those on the building as well to just make that not as cold. As we enter in off of Hunt onto the dog park area, this guy must have lost a ball because he's over the fence. So small dog intended, you can see some of the, the water features and uh other bridge elements and the rolling hills for the dogs in that area. Now you can see all the way through the stage area, you see all the stacked panels of the backside are stacked up on one, two sides. And these are the stones I was talking about that really engage the kids to run, jump up as your parent, you know, traveling through the park and jumping all over. Now we head down through the park to Mio's. See the swings on the right-hand side there, similar to the Summit Park, giving you that kind of break. We're waiting for dinner. I've got my buzzer, waiting to get seated. There's that buffer breakway between the parking and the, and the retail. This is where we start to get hopping. This is your Friday night concert. This is where you get excited, the lights, the show, the parents are taking photos of their children. This is the engaging portion where you want to really activate that corridor. The nice thing about this, what I really loved is the uh, the play is so close to that area. So when the kids and the parents are doing concerts, there's still a way that people can experience both. You can see that's the play equipment there as we start to pass up the uh promenade to the north. Of course, a couple of them are on their cell phones. But as we graze up over the park, you can still see down into the area where the active stage is happening, but you can see some of the patrons. The end of the animation.
Yeah, let me augment that. So um, first of all, thank you. Great job. Uh, you know, as you saw, um, it's, it's just adding more refinement to the design that you conceptually approved last fall. A great testament to um Brian and um, and I see Brian got to be correct now. There's lots of them in the room. Brian Cruz, um, and Gordon and their design team and, and fleshing out all the details that work with this. Should be a couple of takeaways for you. Uh, one, um, you know, the, the project is advancing and, and it's real close to being ready for bid, meaning it has enough engineering done that it's, that it's ready for that. So the question is, um, when will that happen? In uh talking to uh Gordon and Brian over the last few months about the right timing for this. It should not surprise anyone. There's been a lot of price escalations in, in, in the whole world, period. Let alone construction has really been an issue. So they're still refining um cost estimates, but it, it, it does preliminarily approve, uh, appear that it might be jumping up twenty, thirty percent or something like that from the estimates last fall. Gordon's suggestion, based on some recent um bidding where he's not been successful getting bidders, period. And then the few that do bid are just throwing out really wild bids because there's, they're full, is we would wait until late this year. November, December, January, something like that, when work has slowed down for some of the contractors and then we would redo that. The other thing we'll do by that, between now and then is refine our um cost estimates, have a better idea come back to you um before we put out the bid so that you can understand the impact of, of that, how we're going to pay for that and what have you. Tentatively, if things go well, you're looking at construction of next year. But I think we do have some difficult decisions to make later this year. Um, so that's uh takeaway number one. Takeaway number two, last fall, we said, we think we had a plan for the bricks. We weren't real sure. We were still working on it. The great takeaway today is they, they have finalized that they're going to be able to use the same exact bricks. They excavated some of them. They think they can reuse them all. We don't have to replicate them. There's cost of picking up these twenty-five dollar bricks and reinstalling them. Five hundred dollar bricks by the time they're done, but uh, um, next time I have to increase our donation cost. So that, that's really good news. You know, I know there was still an element of the community is still, you know, we told them, we would assure them in some sort, it would be reinstalled or recreated. And the good news in fact is, is there. Um, I think the, the last issue, and this goes back to the first one, was um after the last presentation, there, there was some discussion um uh in the community, not a lot, about uh the clock tower going away. We said, yeah, it wasn't part of the plan. Some, there was a suggestion, well, should we think about recreating it on site? We don't have it in there as of now. They have uh worked up some alternative um newer designs to replace it. I think the question for us is, are we just trying to replicate what was there before because there's nostalgia to it? Do we just let it go? There were some vocal voices about it, but not a lot. And then unfortunately with the cost escalation and have you, uh, we may end up value engineering things away and that might be one of them. So if you could think about that over the next few weeks and, and maybe uh next month, I'll bring it back up again about the clock tower. Uh, you know, it wasn't in the original plan that we presented and it certainly wasn't in there today. I think I even caught a glimpse of, of an alternate one that they have in mind, but I purposely said, let's not put that up there. I'm just not sure we're ready for it and you need to think about it. So it's ninety-plus percent of the park is ready to go. Do have this issue about the, the clock tower, are we going to replicate it or not? And I don't want it to turn into a big debate and halt the whole project over that because I'll reiterate, when we did the survey and the outreach, it was, it was pretty, pretty limited. But that's where we're at. And then the last thing, um, we received a tentative uh three hundred thousand dollar state funding for this. So that's the good news. We didn't get that. Now, we initially uh thought it was going to be about four or five hundred, but the state cut its allocation to the Cincinnati region. And so we will only get um three hundred thousand, but still it's a nice um portion to this. Brian, was there anything else that we wanted to make sure we brought up to them?
I think that covers it unless there's any specific questions.
Certainly ask away. I just wanted to set the stage of where we're at and how we're moving forward on this.
I had four little quirky questions, okay, so.
That's fine.
The children's play area, I'm assuming that's astroturf, yes?
Yes.
Okay, because of the rolls and whatnot.
Durability and everything, you know, maintaining that as a, you know, higher quality without, like planted turf or something, yeah.
And what is about the grade from the viewing area of the stage of the grassy area, I should say, drop-wise, more or less?
We did adjust that. Ryan, do you have that specific? Seven to eight feet over the distance from front of stage to back of green. And the overall port, uh, the overall park is fourteen feet from Cooper Road to down to Town Square.
It was a good drop.
Yeah, it's a pretty significant drop.
Um, and then with the parking lot adjoining to the back of the stage, are you going to, I'm saying bollards or something along there?
Oh, yes, from not able to drive through. Yes, there's bollards surrounding in different ways to keep, to keep uh, if we go. There we go. So surrounding the parking lot either is vegetation or planters and bollards that run through here. So to minimize anybody being able to just run through into the back of the stage, yeah.
The other, and David just kind of touched on it with the pavers. Touchy subject, but um we have a program where people can continually buy those pavers. I'm assuming we have enough space for blanks.
Yes, I believe we went over at least twenty percent additional that you could add. I believe that. Fifty-five hundred. Way more, we're good.
All good. Okay, so those are my quirky questions, so.
Yes.
Question, what, is there, was there any um in, oh, uh, sustainable design to this? Or is there any built into this through vegetation or anything?
Uh, we had, we had looked around in, you know, areas like um vegetative roof, you know, at one point, just the cost of that versus the size of the area. Uh, we felt the real benefit was actually being able to reduce a lot of the hardscape. So heat island effect is a big thing that happens in sustainability. With the harder surface, you have all that heat radiation that comes off the surface of that concrete. So when we reduced, I were deep, believe we went from sixty percent hardscape or to twenty to thirty percent hardscape. So we reduced a lot of that area that the heat can gain. As much as you see hardscape here, it's a lot less than what you have now, uh, especially where, where the parking lot's at. Um, to try to reduce that as well. Um, we did not pursue anything like geothermal. Um, but there are, some of the water sources are allowed to be recycled water, so, but some of them have to be throughput. So it depends on which of those situations, try to reduce water usage.
Parking capacity.
See, fifty, same as what we did before, fifty-five.
Yeah.
I think it was about ten or twelve more than what we have today.
Perfect.
Yeah. I, I heard you mention the stage. It's something you would set up and take down. It's something that's.
Screen.
The, the screen come, moves in and out, but there's, there's an elevated stage I saw in some of the pictures. Is that a? Depending on the performance and the requirements, sometimes maybe the symphony or others may come in. There is a way that you could put in a temporary stage, you know, to raise things up if the eye lines aren't right with what you're showing. But we still have that slope that we've defined to maximize as much as we can for a staged effect. But going too tall or sloping too much prevents it from being playable for day-to-day sports. So in our design drivers was like a three sixty park. So we're trying to maintain, so we maximize as much as we could where we felt safe that people could still kick the soccer ball, throw the frisbee, things like that, uh, to maximize that. So there may be instances in the future that you may have to put in, you know, or somebody performer may say, I want to be a little higher up here. You know, so they may put like a three foot, one of those temporary stages in. But, but most performances, it's designed so that most performances wouldn't have a stage necessarily. That's cool. What's the, what's the parking surface? I, it's, it's very uh graphic. As shown as concrete now. So we had deliberated on pavers, concrete and asphalt. Um, there is an alternate in there as well to be able to provide asphalt based on a cost-budget standpoint. So it could be switched over to either.
How much would be saved if we did not do the dog park and instead just made it open space, maybe with like a, a little cafe table or something like that in it?
I don't have the breakdown specifically of the, actually just the dog park and our s, cost estimating. Wouldn't, I wouldn't have had to answer that one right now. Um, the, the, the area though that we have used is, is um problematic, I guess, a little bit to put other types of things there. Uh, just because there's low portions in the back of it, we felt it was the best position because uh, we talked about this one for a little bit. We actually are required, we need a slope up from, because we're raising this area to make it a more of a continuous park. We needed something here to be able to raise us up a ramp up. That's why parking had to be so far on this side um to get up there. That's why there's a little bit of a notch and you kind of ramp up this walkway as well. So it would be slopes. Um, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that number for you.
I think overall you've done tremendous design here.
We're very excited about it. Like you know, before, I live right down the street, so I'm very excited because I get to. Project to get to go.
It's spectacular. I love it.
Great job.
Love it, love it.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to Miss Laney's business or yeah, where we are in Miss Laney's business. We'll go to David or any other Miss Laney.
Yeah, I don't have anything else before, but while we're on recreational subjects, maybe Brian can just quickly mention him because him and I forgot to compare notes before to say, hey, makes, who's covering this? But the whirlpool repairs continue to be a challenge for us. So I'll let, that's my cue. When, when you get to Brian, Brian, hopefully it will give you a quick update on that. Other than that, when I mentioned before about cost escalations and inflation and what have you, Kelly's going to give you a quick update on the blue. And I would suspect that that'll be, become a challenge as part of that project moving forward as we deal with the tip and public financing and things like that on that. It'll probably have a real impact on, on that project. So, but that's all I have, Your Honor.
So I know you all were hoping we could talk more about brown field remediation, favorite topic tonight. So as you're aware, the, the developer of the Blue Circle Development also applied for state funding to clean up what was contamination caused by a former dry cleaner on that site. And they received the funding and the next week or 10 days, you're going to see a fence going up on the old Blue Ash Chili site, more on the northern portion of that site. They're going to be digging out contaminated soil, hauling it away, flushing the site and then putting back clean fill. So over the next month, you're going to see construction there. You might get questions about it. They're not building the blue. It's not approved yet. But they did just apply today for concept approval of the blue for the project as well as the PUD zoning change. So that will be before planning commission at its July meeting. And then assuming planning commission moves it on, it would come before council at council's August meeting for a public hearing and then presumably a vote at the first September meeting. So that's moving forward, something that's not moving forward. We were under contract to sell the Mallsberry land to cross development and we don't know exactly what happened, but the day of closing, they terminated the contract, released the earnest money to us and walked away from the deal. So it was, yeah, it was kind of strange that they waited so long, but we are still the proud owners of four and a half acres at the intersection of Mallsberry and Kenwood Road. I'm already talking to some other interested parties, but certainly if you hear of anybody looking to build some small offices, pass them my way. That's all I have.
Thank you. Junear, I know you wanted to get up and sock. Chief Noel. Mary. Brian Cruz, we know you got to talk.
Whirlpool, just a quick update. We're working with facilities maintenance on trying to find additional opportunities. We, we found another leak, unfortunately, after we got it remedied the last time. And some of these issues are down inside the ground and so they're not very easy to remedy. So we've gotten some, some quotes to make fixes to those. Unfortunately, if we were to just repair a couple of these, it's going to get pretty expensive fast. So what we're doing is just comparing some costs and looking at some alternative uses of the space. Next week, we have a meeting again with facilities to kind of look at the feasibility of perhaps replacing the whirlpool and kind of understanding what the whole scope of that would be. So quick thank you to the historical society and Elaine Davis. They actually did a very nice job. Cataloging all of our papers that we have out there and making sure that what we have in our database is actually correct. So when we actually go to repurpose them, we'll have something in an IT form to help us do that. So they spent many hours out there and gave us a binder about this stack of the 5500 pavers that are currently out there today and who they're donated towards. And then welcoming Wendy, she just left, but you know, Wendy is probably has the best attendance on our rec board for the past couple of years, better than most of our rec board members actually, but we are an active group. We get together four or five times a year. She's been great. Looking forward to having her. A public thank you to Tom Stone. Obviously he was a roots of Parks and Recreation in the city of Blue Ash. He's a great guy. We love having him around. And then a quick up notice tomorrow night's for Friday night concert. We had our first Tuesday night concert this week. Tomorrow is Soul Pocket. So it'll be a very big one and just have to do the rain dance and try to see if we can get this one in. Been a very busy week for Parks and Rec. We, you know, farmers markets on Wednesday, Tuesday night concerts, of course, Friday night concerts and then off market as well. So we're up and running for sure. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Peters.
Nothing tonight.
Julie, I didn't forget you. Amy.
Nothing. Thank you.
Counselor. Uh, let's go to this end for a change.
Well, I just got, and I usually don't do commercials, but I, I met one of our residents back in our park area yesterday and she started her own business and it's, it's called Mosquito Shield. And they, what they do is they go around to residents properties and treat for mosquitoes and ticks. So if anybody's interested, let me know. I'll pass the info along. So.
Want to publicly say thank you to all of the residents for serving on our boards and commissions for all of those that have been reappointed and Parks and Rec and then Friday night concerts. I'm excited.
I want to add my encouragement to everyone to learn more about Sycamore Bridges. It's really cool. The way that it works in practice is the advocates, many of whom are teachers or social workers in the school or, or somebody else, Beth Roach, for example, knows of a need. They vet that need, they post the need, it comes out on, on social media. Hey, somebody needs money to, to fund baseball fees or somebody needs shoes or somebody has cancer and can we do meals for them, whatever. Within hours, often that need is met. People who want to help their neighbors make either a financial contribution or say, hey, we're going to drop off, yeah, I got size 10 soccer shoes. I'll drop them off at the Lash Fire Department. And then they get passed on anonymously to the, the people who are in need of them. It's a great resource for our community and I encourage y'all to make sure you're following them and on their email list.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
There's your very.
Nothing, nothing today, sir.
You guys covered everything, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, everybody.